Stand for the public leaders, if you know it Sunday.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the special meeting to order, roll call.
You came here, let's go.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Mulder.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Wolton.
Okay, first item on the agenda is accept the resignation from Dean.
We would, Dean had submitted his resignation as utilities superintendent. Last day of being an employee here would be May 12th. He does plan to take some vacation, his last day of work would be Friday, May 5th.
Motion to accept the resignation.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Mulder.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Wolton.
Okay, now we have to have a plan to hire a new utilities superintendent.
Yep, interested in what your thoughts are there about what the next steps would be about hiring a utilities superintendent? I had a couple of questions there in the middle of the page on, for the information memo on page two. So a couple of the questions, should one public works employee be named lead public works employee? What's the timeline then for filling the position? One question would be whether it's before or after the clerk administrator is hired? And does the council wish to continue using utilities superintendent that supervises both public works and electric? Or would you consider creating separate departments again? So we'd throw those questions out to you, see where the discussion goes from here and what the next steps would be.
My opinion is we wait till we get a city administrator hired and see, or city manager, whatever, but what is the legal term?
Administrator.
Administrator. That's just me for, and then have him assist, because they're gonna be working hand in hand, or her.
Does Jeff get a new administrator sometime in August? If we use the compressed formula, that guy will come up with.
Yeah, yeah.
In the meantime, we'll have to figure out what do we do.
Yeah, it's, just that if you look at that to know that you're not hiring somebody for quite some time, just the realization for all of the elected officials that the work to be done would be operations, a little bit of maintenance work, and that's it. Just don't expect really any project work on the public works side, that's really all.
What projects do we have left?
It'd be, I mean, even things like removing trees, that type of stuff.
So very easy to fix down everybody, making sure to do it too.
Very easy.
Washington, we need that.
And you're saying we can't do that because we're down that one guy, or down that leader?
Down the one guy more than anything, I was just having the extra help in order to do it. That, the operations of the plants and, you know, just the chores every day takes at least up till break for the two of them. And then it's really working on any maintenance aspects then after that. So just, you can certainly do that, just so there's an expectation about what occurs, you know, as far as the special project work, it'll be difficult to do.
And it's Lester and Matt, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
One of those would have to be named, at least somebody that would come up and find out if there's, to check the more case every day.
And the other thing, in particular on that, is that when we talk about this contract operator, that he wants one public works guy to interact with. You know, so he doesn't, he needs to have a lead guy that he would be his contact on.
And has either one of them to express interest in that?
I've talked with, I've talked with both of them about long-term and short-term, and neither one of whom, you know, is okay with doing, with being the lead guy. You know, it just seems like, and they would agree, I think that Matt's by far the more experienced guy with experience related to utilities and plumbing operations, and, but then Les has some real good experience then on the management side of things through his private business, he just doesn't have the experience on utilities. So, but when you look at day-to-day utility operation, I think that is important that the contact person would really be most knowledgeable about that. You talked with Les, you know about what happens if Matt were named contact person and he's okay with that. But Matt, Les would certainly entertain that also.
And Les is sitting for his water one year senior.
He is, you don't have a date set on that yet. That's where I'm at.
No, we've sent everything in, they've contacted him. But, you know, everything after we send the money in goes directly through him. So the city's basically out of it as far as they contact him, he sets up the appointment, you know, that kind of stuff. They don't notify us, they notify him directly.
All communication goes to the employee.
To the employee, yep.
But he did say that he's gonna sit for water treatment and then water distribution right away, so this is grade one. But he'd be able to sit for both of those exams and would intend to do that quickly. Then my other note, just on the timeline there about a grade two operator, you see that on the water side of things, and even wastewater, just that the earliest that Les would be able to sit for grade two exams, assuming he becomes a grade what operator, would be, he figured it to be December or January.
Where's Matt on his testing?
Haven't started nothing. And has not taken the 30-hour test, 30-hour class yet, has he?
So didn't we discuss that with Matt when we interviewed?
He does, and that, you know, we would proceed through it, we just haven't done it.
Again, my only concern is how long this process is gonna take if we wait for the administrator to come on board. And I, I think it's gonna be very, very difficult. We gotta set, decide what we're gonna pay this individual, whether we're gonna separate the two out again, or keep them the way they are. I guess we really need to sit down and think about that first before anything. And then decide on a wage budget, because if we get somebody who's certified already, it's gonna cost us money to do that. We gotta figure, I think those should be our first steps. And I don't know that we could wait for, to get the city administrator on board, if we're waiting till August, you know, 'cause then we'll wait till September or October to get our utilities guy.
Yeah.
I guess that's like.
Because whoever the administrator is gonna have to work with whoever we got.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, and it would be that way right now, if we had a guy in place. But we're talking six months before we get utilities guy, and I guess I, you know, we really need to think about that, but we wanna start looking for that individual also at the same time. You know, so we don't hit the winter month without that guy.
So Dave, what you're saying is, are you leaning any particular direction, whether it should be one, or split apart, or what?
Well, I'm also opening, hoping for splitting them apart again, because, you know, I'd like to discuss that part also, because if we get somebody that's certified in the grade two, water sewer, you know, it might be easier to do that and have that guy not, may not wanna be in charge of the electrical or whatever. But if we combine the two, you know, I think we're gonna be looking at a higher salary again, to get, to get both, to do both.
You know, really, when you look at the position, the practical side of it is that, you know, the person has overseeing responsibilities for electric and public works, but whomever you hire is gonna have a specialty in one of those, one of those sides, and not so much in the other.
Right.
So when you look at this thing as a structural, structural benefit, I think there's a lot of benefit about having one person who's over both of the departments. In practice, it doesn't work that way. You know, 'cause, so when Dean was here, and he would focus almost exclusively on the public works side of things, Jeff does the electric side of things. When you get right down to it, and there was the need to do some scheduling, you knew that you had one boss, and the boss was gonna be Dean. And if there was ever a time when any potential conflict arose, there was a chance to look at that and say, you know, Dean's the boss in this instance, and he would do that. Fact of the matter is, man, I don't know that that hardly ever happened, and that they would just work together.
Nope, we usually tried to plan, you know, ahead or accordingly, and if I knew that they were gonna have dig up water or sewer somewhere, then I made plans to have the guys not doing something big on that day, or myself. Many a time, I'm the one running the whole, so. So how's, how do you feel like it's worked? Is there been an issue? Do you think that it's, I guess one of my concerns is that I feel like it's more of a teamwork now. I mean, you still do your thing. The biggest thing that we ran into was when Bill was put in charge of all the departments. It seemed like for four, the first four years, everything got focused on the public works side. It seemed like we got lagged behind on the electric side. Now with Dean here, I kinda focused the electric, he focused on the public works, and then, like I said, we tried to schedule together when one needed help, or we needed help with something. So it's kinda went both ways.
Yeah, but I guess I really entertain, what's your opinion on it? I mean, you're the one that has worked both sides, when they worked together and when they were separate. What would, what do you think about which one would be the way to go?
Well, I worked for 16 years being separated, so.
Yeah.
I guess I kinda lean a little more to that, just for the fact that that's what I was used to. When I was hired on, I was hired on strictly electric department. I didn't even move snow for the first, probably 15 years. We might, we might have filled in if somebody was on vacation or something, but that was it. We didn't even help do snow, you know? Well, when this all got pushed together, then it was all as one. I like the aspect of everybody working together. It seems like we don't clash as you're side, my side, that kind of thing so much, it's more of a all-in-one team thing. So it's pros and cons both ways. Well, my concern is that having the two heads to work together, because you know what happens when that, when it doesn't happen that way? It becomes a real cluster, so.
Yeah.
I mean, again, that has to be something that's talked about, you know? Like I said, moving snow, that becomes a priority, we want all hands on deck, and I mean, whether. And I have no problem with that. And been doing it for five years this way, so everybody knows, if it snows, you're coming in.
Well, I think we have to be aware of the fact that last time we hired somebody who only had two applicants. I don't know how big we wanna start being.
Do you think that was because of being overall two departments?
The two departments, that's what I'm wondering.
That might have been it.
Some people with public works might not be too excited about handling electric.
A lot, you look around, a lot of towns don't have electric, they have gas instead, so you got the same kind of headbutting thing going on.
And they haven't had the head buddy for some years now, here. I never saw it, but.
That's because we got one lead.
Right.
But it is a lot of work for one person to cover both departments, especially if you're unfamiliar with one side or the other.
Right.
Lot of projects to coordinate, you know, if you're coordinating electric projects, you're coordinating street projects, you're coordinating something for water sewer, I mean, it is a lot to handle for one person.
You know, what it has been, is when you think about projects and how we coordinate an electric project, you know, fact is that Jeff is most involved with coordination of electric projects. And if we were coordinating a big one with our engineer, we don't always have Dean sit in and whatnot, but.
They need to be in the loop.
Yeah, because they certainly need to know what's going on, but, you know, the person who has the most input into the project certainly is Jeff.
Well, we need to get a new public works director anyway, but the key evidently is when do we do it? Do we do it this fall, or do we wanna do it now?
I'd be more in favor of doing it now, because, you know, even if we have a guy in place, he's still gonna have to work with the city administrator, and if we wait, he's still gonna have to work with the new city administrator, so I just think it's important to give the ball rolling now. But again, we gotta figure out, we really wanna go after somebody who's grade two, operational already. If that, if we're gonna do that, then we need to figure out, you know, what we're gonna establish for wages.
My only input on that is, is the biggest thing I've heard out of Lester and Matt is, and I lived through it for a month and a half, being on call every week. That's a concern that's there. But.
Right.
That's only.
That's a valid point.
You don't burn them out either.
Nope.
And I know how that works, I lived in.
Yeah, you know, a couple of things here would be, you know, would it be that we make this change and go back to department head, so you'd be advertising for the public works director? And then the timing of that, that we would turn around and do that basically immediately? And then the third thing is to talk about salary range on that. Dean's at 74.5 as salary.
Can we, I'm just talking out loud here, thinking out loud, can we advertise for one and see what kind of pool we get? And put in there, put in that grade one and two, and wastewater one and two is a plus, but not a requirement? Does that make sense? Am I saying that the right way?
Well, we gotta make sure that we wanna work towards.
But, yeah, but, yeah, but you would have to get that, but you might, there might be a guy, I don't know this, there might be the guy out there that sees that, I don't have grade one and two water, so I can't even apply.
Right.
But if they know we're willing to work with them to get it, different story. Same way, you know, just like, you must obtain a CDL once, six months after you get hired, but you don't have to have it to get the job. Does that make sense?
I'm gonna work on the wording, you know, that, the wording that we used from the last, the last recruitment was that preferred training.
Right.
Was level two water wastewater. But, and we could still use that preferred training, willing to work with a good candidate to obtain the certification.
Well, we'd stay at Dean's salary, off of that.
And I do, I do think both Dave and Jeff got valid points. We don't wanna burn the other two guys out for on-call weekends all the time. If we wait, that's a really valid, good point, I think we should probably go forward. I know that was their concern, was that.
They've mentioned that to me, they're gonna get every weekend now. Years ago, Kenny used to be that way, wasn't he?
You never had anybody on call.
You didn't have nobody on call. You just hope.
You just had some of your chores.
Some of your chores, yeah, yeah.
We kinda always did the electric department for, well, I'll say 16 years, 'cause that's how long Brian Swanson was here. We kinda gentleman agreed, the three of us, Bill, Brian, and I, that if one of us was gonna be gone, the other one knew if Bill calls, we need to go help him. And that's, that's how we got by, I guess.
So we would have to have a motion to advertise for public works dollar, some Dean's salary? Well.
You don't have to state the salary, do you?
We would know it, we're starting.
But are we, and I'm in favor of one guy leading everything. So it goes from the administrator to that guy, to the employees, and Jeff is still the lead of the electrical. That's, you know, 'cause that's the way it is. I'm, that's my favorite. I'd like to stay with that. That's just my.
Well, I think they've worked together really well.
Right, they have.
That's just not a problem anymore.
But I know in the past, when we had the two separate heads, that they got stubborn with each other, the one head would say, you're not using the backhoe today, because I'm gonna need to back it out and let it run all day, never use it.
I live some of that.
Yeah, so, this way you got.
That's my concern.
Yeah, this way we got one guy that's in charge of those both projects, can sit in, Jeff's still in charge of the electrical. That's just my opinion.
And we can, if we can work with the new guy about his licensing, I think that would help us maybe draw a bigger crowd.
That's my goal, or that's our goal, I guess, yeah.
I would think so. So we have a motion to, in that effect?
Yeah, just one second here, before we even get to that, if you flip to page four in the packet, that was what we used for our recruitment piece for last time when we hired Dean. Just tell him a little bit about the community and about our systems, and how many meters and this type of stuff, and the third paragraph down talks about the preferred training. So that we, that it is preferred that they would use the adjournment and/or this level two water wastewater, okay? Requires at least four years of work experience relating to electric or public works, and one year as supervisor position. Those would come out of our job descriptions. So is that, you all on board with what those requirements would be?
Well, yeah, I would tell you, do we need at least four years' work experience relating to electric, and/or public works? Yes, okay.
Yeah.
Or equivalent. Do we need that at least four years in there, or it requires work experience related to?
You want to take out the electric part?
Well, not even.
No, I'm saying it just requires, requires work experience related to electric and/or public works.
Just what the minimum would be, you know? I tell you, to talk with Les about this position, he may very well be interested in applying.
If he had four years there, Les is eligible to apply.
But, and he didn't commit either way, but Les has some nice experience as far as the management side of it.
With 13 employees or something?
So anyway, I'm gonna, we'll take out the, what it is in this, just say that it requires work experience.
That's my opinion. I mean, something that's applied for jobs before, sometimes you read them job descriptions and the requirements, and it detours you from applying, and then if you find that right person, they say, oh, well, we could have overlooked that. Follow what I'm saying? And they don't know.
Are you following the four-year thing just because that's what it takes to get adjournment? Eighteen? No. I'm just talking out loud.
But you do want somebody that has some experience, is that right?
Right.
Not fresh in the, they want, yeah.
Just that that comes out of our job description, we would have prepared that years ago. You know, I don't know what the rationale is. Okay, so advertise immediately for a utilities superintendent. Again, looking at that on page four, that date on the bottom is a suggested date, that the position would be open until filled with the first review of applications on May 22nd. That by the time we publish, and that's just a couple weeks' worth of application time now, to get things rolling. So I know that's a, looks like a month, 'cause it is, but that's about, you can't do it a whole lot quicker.
Would you link them all in places we advertise?
Yeah, so here, here's, I guess, my proposal, Lakeview Resort, Tri-County Special, Saks Sun, Swirl with Pilot Tribune, Carol Harold, advertise through the Iowa League, through Iowa Workforce Development, and we would use Indeed.
What about ZipRecruiter?
I guess.
Is that a pay, is that a, for hire thing? I don't know.
You know, what, we've used them before, and then we made the switch over and use Indeed, and only we ever used one online presence. Let me confirm that, because it seems like when we post through Iowa Workforce Development, they post through ZipRecruiter, but let me confirm that.
Sorry?
You're understanding that salary range is very close to where we're at right now?
We're gonna start there, I think.
Seventy-five-ish?
Depending on qualifications.
Yeah, when you put that in, I mean, when you, if you don't have some type of salary range, you know, it does not encourage people to apply.
But, so you're gonna put that in the ads, then, is what you're saying?
Well, even, like the online presence, for Indeed, they ask for that information.
So.
And we put a range in it, say sixty-five, seventy-five, you know.
Four to my eighty-eight.
Right.
That was eight.
I think I heard you say that one time. In a perfect world, if we ended up getting an adjournment line with water sewer, public works experience as well, in a perfect world, I wouldn't wanna detour that person away because we limited it at seventy-five. Is where I'm saying that, depending on qualifications, the reason I'm saying that. You find the right guy, person.
So publish it, just say open for negotiation, is that a thing that we shouldn't do, or do, or do that to it?
I guess when, when we had salary negotiable on this last time, again, just as a job seeker, when you see that, you're not as intrigued as knowing what exactly.
That's right.
So you're gonna put a range in there?
Seventy-five to a hundred. Everybody would need to buy into the notion that you might go to a hundred, you know, when.
Well, it's the qualifications.
Sure. And I tell you, when Bill was here, he was just shy of that, he was ninety-five or whatever. He has a very, very.
Well, very close when he retired.
But he had a number of years too, I mean.
Thirty, thirty-two years.
Yeah. I mean, he had to work his way up there, he didn't start there.
Right, but if you had a guy that's got 25 years' experience somewhere else and applied, looking for, to move to Black Rock Lake, had 25 years' experience, it's gonna take that to get that guy. We're in a whole new world of supervisor positions.
But also, we're gonna have to keep the wages up to retain what we got, too. Using that, you're gonna have to.
Depending on qualifications?
Yep. But the guy that we like, doesn't have the electrical, then we're down to, whatever we gotta do.
I guess that's where I'm at, advertise for a utilities superintendent, that would happen right away. Salary range could be seventy-five to one hundred, depending on qualifications.
Just because we put that range in there, doesn't mean we gotta pay him a hundred.
Oh, no. Dave, you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. All the people mind, that's the same thing with our city administration for your position. You know, I don't wanna, we're gonna have to pay somebody to come here, especially if we want somebody with past experience.
Right.
We wanna try a little, or, you know, yeah, just imagine what all we want.
I agree. Dave, would you like to make the motion to advertise with those specifications?
I would make that motion, absolutely.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Okay, Wolton.
Yes.
Mulder.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Okay, we have a contract maybe with the water sewer guy?
Yeah, so. Yeah, so. Seeing as how we would not now have a, a water operator, uh, on staff, we do need to, uh, make sure that we re, become compliant with the, with the DNR.
Is this a month by month, David?
And this would do it, this would be a month by month. The contract is for, um, it's a one-year contract with a thirty-day notice to get out. And the, the fee would then be nine hundred fifty dollars. That is water treatment, water distribution, and wastewater. Having and, uh, do all, all three of those. So we have, uh, we're working with, with Oppe over at Wall Lake now about the distribution, and we would, um, we would not work with, with Wall Lake anymore. Everything would be underneath this, this one contract.
So they take the water samples, that they gotta run it where the Cherokee?
Yeah, they do, you know, but the, the operations of, of the utility still falls with, with our staff. You know, so really what, uh, what this, uh, the contractor is doing is providing supervisory services. And we are u- using his license, of course, then as far as being, remaining compliant for all, for all of the reporting. Okay? When you get down to it, the guy who's responsible for operations of the, of the utility is contractor. So, um, so what, what this would be is, is that he is on site and, and would be here a couple of times a week. And it, it devotes, you know, a few hours a, a week to, uh, to take care of the water and sewer here. But the daily testing and everything that goes along with that is still, is still done by the employees, you know. So our contractor is, is assuring that the proper tests are taken at the right time and that type of stuff. It is, it's much more administrative than actually doing, doing the work, but, uh, this is what it takes them to, to become compliant.
We can have him run the samples off the Cherokee instead of our guys.
Um.
Typically, we don't have to run them up.
Yeah, we, we try, we do ship them up.
If it's not a special test.
Okay.
The special test has to be run up, so say, God forbid you had a water main break or whatever, then you gotta do a special test. When we were doing the filter, changing filters over, you had to have a special test.
Okay.
November through January, we do run them up every week because we've had issues with, uh, being in the mail. And the UPS people are so swamped that they just throw our boxes around, and we've had issues with that. And that's the only other time. Otherwise, we don't typically, we usually ship them in the mail.
Okay, that, that's why I was just asking, trying to,
Yep.
see what the procedure was, so.
Yep.
Are you using the mail or UPS?
UPS out of, we take it over to Corntebell, and then they send it out of there.
Did you ever check into that, Scott, about him stopping right here at the office? We talked about that one day.
Yeah, I know we had, and we turned on and asked the, asked him, miking it. I don't even recall what the heck they answered.
He said, yes, you go online and fill. I was here when you asked, you could ask that. He said, yes, you go online and fill.
He did ask you about it, but, uh, we have not done anything with that.
Which would be great, they just, they stop, not daily here anyhow.
Right.
As long as the timing, right? I mean, they have to be next day, then, there's so many hours that they have to.
We've always had to make sure we had them to Wall Lake by eleven o'clock in the morning, which is not an issue. They go do them, them tests and stuff in the morning. By break time, then they're done and shipped off.
But as contract, we don't have option A and option B. It's, we gotta.
We, we really need to do this.
I might motion to hire this guy for.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Beckman.
Yes.
Stanky.
Yes.
Mulder.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Wolton.
Yes.
Okay, resolution twenty-three, twenty-two, we found another part-time guy.
Yeah, this would just hire one additional part-time guy to be a utility floater. We have one utility floater, um, a young fellow that we've, we've hired, and Dave Clutton has, uh, has approached us, interested in, in being a utility floater. Dave's a retiree, and this would not be a full-time job. You, you look to work two or three days a month. But, uh.
At least we get our sewer generator stuff, don't we?
Yeah, a little, little extra work available, so.
Looks like you've got a motion approved, second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mulder.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Stanky.
Yes.
Wolton.
Yes.
Okay, regretfully, we have to accept the resignation of Scott.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
First of all, I'd like to thank him for all of his years of service there. I have really good.
Thanks, Jeff. Appreciate it. Thank you.
And the stars on your back of your heels, somebody whipping.
It, it will. Yes, Jeff.
Are you relocating?
Okay. We will, um.
Did you read your pamphlet that you got sent to you? It says that you must reside in the city of Jefferson.
They probably mean.
Yeah, I'll, I'll update you here in just a second if you have a roll call.
Roll call.
Okay, Stanky?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Wolton?
Yes.
So just that on, on that, um, so I go to work down there on June fifteenth. My last day here for the, for the city of Lakeview then would, would be Friday, June second. Have a little bit of, of break in between. And, uh, so yeah, we gotta, gotta move down, move down there. We'll sell our house here and, and, and purchase a house down in Jefferson. We, uh, uh, but then we'll purchase that house down there, we'll move half of our stuff down there. And there's a parsonage here in the town where Nancy's still gonna have her pasture responsibilities in the area. So we'll move part of the stuff in to give you the parsonage. To weather it apart for a few days out of the leak. But, uh, I know Nancy's really excited about that, to see if an opportunity can get to utilize the parsonage that way, and, but we do. We will be, uh, moving down to Jefferson, and we'll, we're looking for a home down there, and it'll be, it'll be a challenge to, to find a home, especially in our ideal situation, we'd love to downsize a little bit. Get out, get out of the big old two-story house, right? And, uh, a lot of the homes available down there are also bigger homes, so we'll, we'll see how everything goes.
And it'll be closer to Iowa State.
Yeah, I understand. It's like forty minutes.
Yay.
After a football game, some late night now, it'd be great.
And he gets to golf.
I do.
Gets to go to the rec center.
And just go golf, turn up, wow. Well, that's good. Glad it worked out for you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
But we do have a proposal from this guy.
So, yeah, the next, uh, next issue would be, what do you want to do about, uh, about recruitment? Clerk administrator. And what that might look like, I know during, during budget time, we had some, some discussion and set some additional money aside for some additional office staff. Um, I would not suggest maybe that, that we proceed into additional office staff right now. I was gonna get, get a, uh, city administrator on board. You might think about structure and how, how you might see this thing coming together in the long term. Kay and I have discussed this a little bit, and haven't necessarily come to any, any solution about it, what even a, a recommendation might be. But, uh, but it certainly, certainly could be that you'd have a, have a city administrator and you'd look at promoting Kay to be a city clerk. And, and then you can look at, uh, some additional help to come in for a billing clerk or whatever else that might be. So just be, I think, thinking about that in the future. Couple of things here that we'll, that we'll talk about is the recruitment process and, and what do you want to do to, to recruit the, uh, the next administrator. The other thing that we, we really need to be working on is, is some additional, uh, help then during this interim. Because it likely isn't, there, there won't be anybody here before, before I would leave. Yeah, there certainly won't be. And, uh, for twenty-four years now, Kay and I have, have ran that office, that we, we've ran that office by ourselves. And, uh, you know, it certainly is at least a two-person, or a two-person job to, to make that happen. And so we're gonna have this, uh, this interim time here where Kay's, Kay's there flying solo, and she would not be able to take care of everything, uh, by herself. We do need to figure out what it, what it would be to, uh, to come up with some, uh, some additional staffing. I wrote in the, in the council packet about this opportunity with Midwest Assistance Partnership, that, uh, that they would be able to, uh, likely provide some additional staffing. What it amounts to is that Nancy Jensen would be able to come over here and assist. Nancy's, uh, experienced city clerk, had worked for Auburn, Litten, Berita. But we need to continue to work with, with Midwest Assistance Partnership.
Is, is. Is she part of the Midwest?
She's an employee of Midwest Assistance Partnership, yes.
Not Midwest Municipal Consultant?
No, two different things.
Okay.
Two different things. Yep. Yeah, did.
If we're as, uh, consulting, uh, at least two weeks, we do them before we got to them.
Oh, on the, on the hiring side, yeah.
Yeah.
I guess, uh, yeah, I guess a couple, a couple of different things that we were talking about.
Is Nancy on board with interim coming in, or Midwest?
Yeah. I have, I have talked with her, and she was, uh, certainly on board with being able to help us out. What that looks like, we don't even really know yet. Because, um, Nancy has, she has been able to help out other communities and, and, and work through, uh, some problems, but she would do that individually. And this would be actually working through Midwest Assistance as a, as a fee-for-service contract with them.
Because she works for them.
Yes, she works for them, yeah.
And you guys, are you familiar with Nancy Jensen? I know you are.
I am, yeah.
She's originally from Wall Lake.
Glenn Janus Dederman's daughter from Wall Lake.
She used to go to Sac County League when we was all the time.
Okay.
Well, she was at Auburn.
She was at Auburn.
And I think she had something to do with, uh, she said on the board for Sac Economic.
Yeah, that sure could be up to her, though.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
As well.
So it just, as you think about what needs to happen here during the interim and the type of skills that, that it even takes to, to walk in and be of some help to Kay. Because having somebody come in and, and sit at, at Kay's desk and accept payments and answer the phone is of very little help to Kay. Kay?
I think we're gonna need somebody in the interim to, and I don't know who or the right person is at this point, to be honest with you. Uh, I know back from my co-op days, when the co-op general manager would retire or would take a different position, they would always bring in, they had a pool of retired general managers that would come in and sit in, as an interim, and basically run the show until they got a replacement.
So what kind of duties need to be performed to help Kay out, is?
They're really the, the day-to-day operations duties. So Kay, Kay, of course, does just a fantastic, uh, job of doing the things that Kay does. But then, any, any of the day-to-day stuff that, that I do needs to, uh, needs to be attended to then too, so, you know. I would do the payroll, you know, and then any, anything pertaining to the, to the city council and, and interaction with the council and preparation of the minutes. But then another thing that, that just, this time of year especially, it ends up being a big deal, is, uh, is dealing with people in building permits. It's time-consuming. Those, those things are.
So you do payroll today?
I do.
Is there an accounting firm we could utilize to do payroll in the interim?
That's just one little thing.
I know, but I'm just trying to get.
I mean, there's, there's opportunities for, for stuff like that, um. We, of course, we have this special municipal software, so it's specialized about, about folks who may, who may know how to, to jump right in and be able to do that, not that you can't learn. But, uh, I guess the other thing is whether G Works contracts, Kay, I didn't even ask him about that.
I guess we could check.
About whether the software provider would contract any of that stuff.
So they, they would be capable of doing what needs to be done? Is that what you're?
Parts of it.
Parts of it, and so.
Not all of it.
What, really what, I, I think the best answer is very similar to what Dale is, is, is just to have an experienced person come in and be able to help out. And even if the experience is just that you understand the general concept of government, uh, and, and have, and have worked in government setting before, it's important. And, uh, so that's why we were looking at, at, at former city clerks, so we talked to Nancy. And I tell you, the other one that we talked to is, uh, Diane Lucas, lives with Ray.
She was the clerk in Berita for.
And I talked to, uh, to Diane about that, and she was, uh, gonna get back to me about her interest. Anyway, we will, we will keep searching for, for what the answer might be, because we're gonna have to do something.
I, I definitely, we gotta, and then, and I don't know the answer to this, I don't know, and I'll ask you guys, but I don't know, is there a way that, maybe even we could, in the interim, utilize Sheriff Sacks or Wall Lakes or anybody's? Berita's, Auburn's, O'Dobbs'.
I guess interesting thought, because Sack runs the same software.
Except for that I know way more than they do.
Well.
They call and ask questions, so I have to give them training on it.
But I mean, as us looking at this week, I think all five of us, all seven of us sitting here, eight, well, ten of us, probably all realize we're gonna need somebody in the interim, because we're not, odds of us having somebody hired by July first is gonna slip.
Yep.
And.
Does Sack have a city administrator retire a year or two ago?
Hmm, he left.
He left? He didn't retire, he moved up.
He moved somewhere else.
The flip, the flip-flop administrators, then they went to Kentucky, one went to Kentucky, the other one came from there to here.
Yeah, something like that.
It, it was something crazy like that.
True.
They had a city clerk retire. Oh, that's, I guess.
Maybe that's what I had heard.
I, uh.
Okay.
Sandy telling you.
Yeah, Sandy wasn't well-liked.
No, I hated her.
So I think let's explore our options.
Yeah, we'll keep exploring, keep exploring the options.
And get some cost figures in place for our options. Does that make sense?
Yep, we'll, we'll keep looking at that.
Kay, if we're gonna throw all this extra work on you, how much more is it gonna cost us to keep you?
Well, the minute you find me crying under my desk, I would hope you'd come stay.
I mean, the, the council's well aware that we're gonna throw more stuff on you, other than they want to.
Well, I know, but you need to also, I mean, figure out, are you gonna be able to find somebody to come in? And if you do, you know, what duties am I gonna try and absorb or?
Think about it.
Yeah.
Maybe, you know, maybe, listen, food for thought, maybe we need an assistant to the assistant.
Well, I think we, we certainly had talked about that.
Right.
And, uh, and long-term, that maybe the.
One of the things our auditor says, we, every time in that.
Well, we struggle with, you know, we have to have division of job duties, and we struggle with only the two of them.
Right.
Sometimes only have one. They, they get it every time, so we.
They do that every year.
Every year.
Just something for us to think about, that, the decision that I'm making.
Right.
Got something for.
No, but we need to work on a proposal from the consulting room, so we can get started there.
Yeah, I guess that's, that's the next question then, about how you'd like to proceed with, with recruitment, and really would just be you on, look at soon, doing some traditional recruitment with the, the city council? Really taking the lead and doing it yourself, or would you look at, at utilizing a consultant to do that? So the information from, from Liz Hanson from Municipal Midwest Consulting is included in the packet, and interested in your thoughts. Now, having said that, she submitted a draft to me ahead of time. And, uh, so I went through that, and my only comment back, we were actually dealt with, uh, with the timeline on this, and asked her about compressing the timeline. This is the compressed timeline that she gave back. Okay, so it, it is still, it's still a lengthy process, but that is, uh, asking her to compress it once already.
So how far out does she go? Oh, I'm sorry, Dave.
Go ahead, Dave.
Go ahead.
I guess I, I like the idea of using her because she could, you know, she's done this quite a few times. And she would be able to give us some advice on, on our side of the community and stuff, on what it's gonna need, what we're gonna need to, um, pay an individual to come to a community our size. Um, give us advice on that part also, um, what they're gonna take to, um. What it's gonna take to acquire that individual. Because, you know, we can look through that, and with her expertise, I think, she has a lot of experience in there where we as the city council stole, because Scott's been here, how many years, Scott?
Twenty-four years, yep.
Twenty-four years, and all of us on the council have not had that much experience in hiring an administrator.
So Scott, you've worked with her, was she one of that?
Yeah.
And what was your feeling about that?
Yeah, just that, I would highly recommend their firm to do a search. They have done several searches for very small communities. And just, it's kinda right in her wheelhouse about the type of candidates that she can get, and has had success in placing really a couple of small ones. You see, she listed, I think, Rizwold and Woodbine. Had successes there.
How far out did she go, looking for candidates?
Statewide, you know, everything statewide plus. Statewide plus, really, because when I interviewed down in Jefferson, one of the candidates was from Kansas. And she did the search down there. Because, yeah, I hope that you had a chance to...
There's other people that do the same thing.
Oh, sure there is.
And before we jump into one, I'd either like to visit with them, basically interview them, and reach out, that's my opinion, this is my opinion. I wouldn't like to just jump in and go, we know nothing about this person. Know nothing about this firm.
Well, you won't know anything about the other ones either.
No, until we get a chance to reach out.
Right.
Yep.
But if we're gonna do that, there again, you're talking more time.
One week is not gonna kill us, in my opinion. And I'm just speaking my mind.
It's one week, I get that.
Yeah, that's fine, we can quickly turn around and get another...
I don't wanna hold up too long as one example.
I agree, I a hundred percent agree. But I'd like to do some research, to be honest with you. That's only me. I've done a little bit already, and I can share with you what I've found. And I found there's one, two, three other places that do the same thing, and I don't know what the cost structure is from them places. But... That's only my opinion.
I guess my suggestion then, Dale, is that we look at getting another proposal, which we can quickly do, that there's another firm who does a lot of these searches and has done some smaller community ones too, and that's Henson, Mark Jackson, Brett Henson. And that would be another suggestion, get a proposal from them. Otherwise, you're looking at larger firms, I think, otherwise other than that. These...
There's Pat Callahan.
And they work together, Pat.
Okay. And then there's Midwest Municipal Consulting, and then there's Brett Henson.
Yes, yep. Yeah, Pat's, Pat has gotten, he has got a lot of searches on his own, but I don't know that he does searches on his own anymore. He's really of retirement age and just assistants, and Mark Jackson. So, yeah, just to get a proposal.
Dave, what do you think?
I just wanna go away to the side. I wanted somebody who's been successful in getting quality candidates for a small community and goes to help, you know, I, you know, I... I guess this gal has a track record in our area and stuff. I'm sure there's, I'd be happy with her, I guess.
What's everybody else think?
Again, they had to hold things off for a week, but we can have another proposal by Monday.
And I don't mind that, I just don't wanna hold it long.
Yeah, I don't wanna...
So if we can do it in a week?
Yeah. Well, I'm sure we'll just say they gotta have it. And they understand the idea about responding quickly.
And this headhunter's gonna wanna talk to just a couple people here.
Yeah, this, when I, especially when I asked Liz Hansen for this compressed timeline, there was one comment that came back that said, then when you're really compressing the timeline for the selection process, then it doesn't always allow to work with the full city council at a meeting, that it would likely be working with a council committee on some of the process. But of course, when you get down to the nitty-gritty and the interview time, the council, the entire council is involved, and actually many, many more people the way that either one of these, either one of these folks structure their interviews, it'll very likely include city council, an interview panel with the staff, and interview with community leaders. And so, yeah, I can have some stuff ready by...
So what is the vertical timeline, then? How long would, what's often compressed time?
Timeline on the recruitment?
Yeah.
Is...
August is what this gal's...
You know, she has us, has you interviewing folks in July. And then it's just a matter of how quickly the candidate would be able to get here. And if you're hiring an experienced administrator away from another city, it's just, it's not unusual that it would be six weeks, a month or six weeks.
It's a bit of a tough, slow through stuff.
And we, I think a recruiter is gonna help you out to get the best candidates that you can. Just, I encourage you to be realistic about the type of candidate that you're gonna get to, you know, like use a small community. And it's tough to expect that you'd get somebody with a lot of experience, unless it happens to be a retirement, you're looking for their, maybe their last stop. But it's, yeah, let me get another proposal we'll discuss on Monday, the first. I do have this question for you. I'm sure both of them, because I know Elizabeth certainly has offered that she would come speak with the council or we'd do something over Zoom. And if we get a proposal from the other firm too, make that same offer too about scheduling and time when they could give their twenty-minute spiel about their firm.
Is this FYI for us to...
Yes, this thing is FYI. And what, so the Iowa City Management Association, for all of their members, they put out a very detailed salary review. So what I did, this is a spreadsheet then, so you can search by whatever. So this has everything from one thousand to three thousand population, is what that shows. That's it, I think, I'm on mine. Anything else to discuss, Kay, anything to forget?
No, if I think of it.
Council have any more questions? You want to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Need to adjourn.
All right, thanks to everybody. Last twenty, thirty...
See you, baby.
You too, enjoy the rest of your week.